Everybody, everybody good? If we'll stand, we'll open with a word of prayer and pledge allegiance, let's spell it, attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day in Marston County. Lord, we just opened our hearts and our minds for your pouring in of your direction that we would honor you and please you in all that we do and say. Lord, have mercy upon us. May we serve to the best of our abilities and do it with integrity and honor, serving the citizens of Washington County. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. At this time, we'll call our meeting to order for April 25th, and we have approval of two sets of minutes. I'll ask for the first approval for April 4th and then a separate second, separate motion for the minutes of April the 18th. Comments or?
Just one comment, I believe it was April 4th. I missed part of the meeting. Should I vote or just abstain altogether?
I'll rule on that.
Any thought?
Would I say this thing could do is just abstain?
Okay.
Motion to approve April 4th minutes.
Second. Okay, motion is second. April 4th minutes, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention, four to four and one. Okay, April the 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second for approval, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, five oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners reports and comments. Commissioner Harvey, you want to go first today?
Okay, I will. Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, Commissioner Kiefer and I met with the Commission on Aging and had a good exchange, learned a little bit more about their operations, their challenges, their hopes, their aspirations, provided them some detailed questions about wanting more information about a couple of their programs and some of the data points so I could understand better what they're Commissioner Klein and I were at a couple of different events this week. One of them was the Interfaith Coalition's, not an opening, but a ribbon cutting for solar panels and renovations to their rescue house in Hancock and Debbie Cole Hill and the board there and all the citizens that contribute is just another example of people pulling together with a common purpose and unity of effort to do good things for our community. Matter of fact, we see a lot of that every week across our county and all of our commissioners are invited to a number of those types of things. And, you know, we've got a lot of business openings or grand reopenings. And one that I was pleased to attend a few days ago was at the Premium Outlets, and that was the grand reopening at the outlets for the Overwatch, which is a thrift store that has moved to a much larger location at the corner of Premium Outlets. And just a shout out to Amber Mowry and her husband Aaron, who also owns J-Dog. And, you know, they're just an example of young people doing great things, entrepreneurial spirit and taking risks to do good in our in our community. And it's a veteran-owned and veteran-focused company. But we've got a lot of those types of things that we're going to, so there's a lot of activity, a lot of entrepreneurial spirit. And I would also like to thank the Chamber, because I see them at all these events, Paul Frye and others, and they help coordinate that. And our business and development team here always have have people helping coordinate and work well with with our businesses in our community. So shout out and a commendation to the Chamber and our team here that works so hard on development purposes, business development. And then just one last comment. You know, we have a very good staff and we've got some excellent leaders on our county staff. And as we go through this budget process, some of them, you know, get pressured. There's a lot of debate about some of the initiatives that, you know, the budget questions we get. And just in day-to-day business, as I've dealt with a lot of the different offices, I'm impressed by the professionalism and the capability of our leadership across our different offices and our workers. I find that there's a lot of integrity, good communication, and I just want to, again, give a shout out to, you know, a quality workforce that sometimes has to deal with some, you know, some pressure. And I just want them to listen to their inner voice and do the hard right things, okay? And I thank them, again, for working as a team to help us as commissioners get the right information, get the data correct, and making sure that there's open and constant communication so we are able to make good decisions. So thank you to all of our staff across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kiefer, we'll just do that side of the table this morning.
Sure. No, I thought those comments at the end that Commissioner Harvey said was very nice. Budget cycle season is probably the time of year we get the bulk of our questions, especially as it relates to spending taxpayer dollars. I've appreciated the feedback I've gotten from citizens, from staff, from fellow elected officials even. I think those comments have been in great numbers this year, so I thank you for that feedback. Information is important. Getting the information, learning both sides of staff's thoughts and organization's thought or department's thoughts, the commissioner's thoughts on a dollar amount on a program or a project is all important. And maybe this is the geek inside of me, but I really appreciate diving in and getting to know those operations a little better in the area of county government that, quite honestly, I don't have the knowledge in or the experience. None of us do. We're not, I don't think anyone at this table is a water and sewer expert, but we have water and sewer experts. And learning that is always interesting. I learn something new every year. This is my eighth budget cycle, I believe, and you learn something new every year, and I really appreciate that. So thanks for everyone's hard work on our budget.
Good morning. Seems like we're all sort of thinking alike this morning. My comments were first to staff, I've reached out four times this week to staff and they've been very obliging, real quick answers, so I thank staff for that. And Commissioner Harvey was commenting on what's going on in Washington County. If you think there's not a lot going on, I think Michelle can, I think we've signed probably 30 proclamation and recognitions this week already. So that tells you they're all for new and opening adventures and entrepreneurs, businesses and achievements by the community. So I've never signed that many. I mean, it's like just every day there's 10 laying there. So, you know, we're all trying to get to the many as we can get to to help show respect and honor the people who are receiving these. We do the best we can to get to all of them. And then, last but not least, one of those was Scott's First Aid. It opened up, relocated, it had a re-grand opening. It's a, it's an interesting business. He supplies all kinds of medical equipment and training throughout the community and beyond the community. It's located across from Osborne Funeral Home on Conica Jig Street in Williamsport. I forget the number, it's like 416 or something.
Bean.
Yeah, is that what it was? What a mind. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Biden?
Yeah, I also agree with the comments about our staff. I appreciate it. Agree with how well and helpful and just a little sidebar explanation, I was having trouble with my iPhone, so I know not to mess with it. So I took it up to Josh and in less than 15 seconds, he solved it for me. So Josh, if you're listening, thank you very much. Always go to the expert for advice. I also attended Scott's First Aid on Friday. He's enlarging his location from our previous spot. Mr. Scott also is, I believe he's a volunteer Clear Spring Ambulance, so he's, and he works in Montgomery County still, I believe, as a career EMS, so he does a lot for the community besides opening and expanding a business. I did attend an Arbor Day celebration down in Boonsborough Schaefer Park on Sunday. They were planting some trees and cleaning the streams, and they also had a tree dedication for one of their parks committee, environmental committees people who passed away, Bruce Schmidt. His wife was there and they honored his memory and dedication to the town with the planting of a tree. That was a very solemn but sentimental occasion, recognizing his efforts. And I also attended the event in Hancock with the solar energy event at the Good Samaritan House. Their estimates are that that solar energy will pay for all the electric for that facility, which is a savings for that organization. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein.
Oh, and I did pretend the airport, pardon, I did, in the absence of Randy, I did attend the Airport Board, so that was quite an informing meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. It must be in the air or the water or the Kool-Aid or something, because likewise, I just find, particularly in the past week, it's all come together, the meeting with staff, their professionalism. And then I go to church on Sunday, and I know many of you probably get tired of, I brought Sunday's bulletin, it's, and one of the things that highlighted says, "To be kind is more important than to be right." Many times, what people need is not a brilliant mind that speaks, but a special heart that listens. So I think on behalf of all five of us, we've been listening, we've been appreciative and very thankful to the experts in our staff. This past week or two has been extremely busy. One of the highlights for me was there was an unveiling at the Hagerstown Regional Airport with the TSA. And I'll tell a little funny story on Commissioner Klein. The TSA was there and to demonstrate the new state-of-the-art x-ray and security equipment that is basically germane and only to the Hagerstown Regional Airport. My understanding is from TSA, some of this, one of these components is not even at the bigger BWI or airport, and maybe Neil can expand on that, but very interesting, you no longer need your boarding pass, you just show them your driver's license, and that crazy machine instantly brings up everything about you, has your boarding pass, whether you're confirmed on the flight or not. So all you need is your driver's license. The other half of it is the new baggage claim inspection, your carry-ons. I never seen anything like it. They took us behind the screen and it shows everything in absolute detail in your bag. It's so, the resolution is absolutely incredible. And in joking, I said, "Commissioner Klein, lay on the conveyor belt, I'll push you through. I want to see if there's anything inside of you."
Bunch of metal.
And the TSA people did kind of chuckle and they thought that was funny, so.
One of the things that I may add to that, when they're looking at that baggage, they can see which item is under suspect, it's targeted. So the person inspecting the baggage can go directly to that area and not accidentally missing something. So that's, it's very, very technology oriented.
And to think that Hagerstown Regional Airport has state-of-the-art equipment that even the bigger airports do not have at this point is rather phenomenal and I think very heartwarming for us that fly in and out of Hagerstown, and we know our citizens are safe and it just enhances our airport. Number of other things last week, Lieutenant Governor, yeah, Lieutenant Governor of Maryland was at Brooke's House. She sat for an hour and a half and took questions and interacted with a number of folks from our community. She met one-on-one with some of the young ladies that are there at Brooke's House in therapy, and it was, I thought, a very good meeting, good opportunity. I did present Lieutenant Governor of Washington County Penn and invited her back, and she pulled me to the side and she goes, "The governor and I want you to know that Western Maryland is not forgotten. You are part of the team and we will always come to Washington County and be a part of things as time permits." So she was very accommodating. Also met with Congressman David Trone at Sam Ar Children's home last week. They're reevaluating, turning the facilities into more of a therapy, more so than a group home for mental illness and a complete new initiative to enhance mental health issues in our community in collaboration with the school board, Brook Lane, and a number of other entities. So their board is in transition and looking to turn what was the group home there into a more of a day facility and respite, some type of care. So we wish them well. I've offered to participate in their upcoming meetings and dialogue, so we'll see what happens. A great event last week at the Warehouse Cinemas. Hats off to them, a complete renovation at Warehouse Cinemas. If you think the movie theaters are dead, all you need to do is go to our local warehouse out on Laersberg Pike. It's phenomenal. Some of the initiatives that they've done, the new seating, the recliners, the heated and cooled seats, it's just, it just goes on and on and on. The screen, the electronics, the audio, just absolutely phenomenal. And again, when many other movie theaters across the country are closing their doors, hats off to Ryan, or not Ryan, but Rich Daltrych and his team. They've just transitioned Warehouse Cinemas here to the, a complete another level. There's a number of other things. Had the pleasure of attending the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Annual Play Musical at the Maryland Theater over the weekend. If you didn't get an opportunity to attend that, you've missed it, it's over. I think there was eight performances over the last three weeks. Absolutely phenomenal. There's no way, sitting in the audience, you had to pinch yourself, you had to close your eyes, because there's no way it's a high school production. It's just, it's beyond, way beyond that. It's beyond college. It's, it's so close to professional, I don't know that you could tell the difference. Not a miscue, not a misstep, just phenomenal. The talent of kids at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts and for this community is just absolutely phenomenal. I know there's a few other things this morning. However, the last thing on my list here is rather sad. We've been notified this morning that Cass Taylor, Speaker, former Speaker of the House, first from Western Maryland in over 100 years, passed away, I guess, yesterday. And so our condolences to the, to the Taylor family from Cumberland and Allegheny and Garrett Counties. Cass worked hard in the Maryland Legislature for many, many years, and we just keep his family and friends in our thoughts and our prayers here today, so. With that, we missing anything, forgotten anything? With, with that, we'll move into staff comments, and I'm going to ask Kendall. You want to go first?
Kendall DeSonia, Deputy County Attorney and interim Human Resources Director, requesting a vote to approve the promotion of Tyler Price to Section Supervisor at the central location of the Highways Department. Is currently at a grade 11, Step 6, with an annual salary of $55,190. In the new role, he will be promoted to a grade 13, Step 4, and that annual salary is $62,190.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
I need to back step here for a second. I did forget something. Upcoming events, don't, please don't forget tonight's evening Board of County Commissioner meeting, joint meeting with Smithsburg at Smithsburg Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Tomorrow, April the 26th is grand opening of Regis Headquarters Office Space at 33 West Franklin Street. April 27th, joint meeting with the City of Hagerstown at 8:30 AM. April the 28th, AFL-CIO Annual Workers Memorial Day Event out at the UAW office on Mulligan's Avenue. April the 29th, Talon Studios Ribbon Cutting. April 29th, 100th Anniversary of Gordon's Groceries. May 1st, opening of Smithsburg Farmer's Market at 4:00 PM. May 2nd, opening of Boonsborough Farmer's Market, 4:00 PM in Potomac Avenue in Boonsborough. And on May 3rd, we have the Goodwill Horizon Power of Work Awards at the North Burhens Boulevard Goodwill Horizon Facilities. So my apologies, I did.
President, pardon me, I have one more thing.
Sure.
I think a couple Commissioners are in the hospice radiothon. I believe Commissioner Kiefer and Commissioner Wagner are on 2 o'clock to 3 hour. Jokingly, us three are participating in the annual Dewey's House Hospice Radiothon on Saturday between noon and 1:00. Please give us a call and donate to where the calls, no matter which Commissioner, you'll still be helping out the hospice in Dewey's House in Washington County. That's this Saturday, calling time for us is noon to 1:00. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Klein. Back to staff comments. Kurt, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. John Martorano?
Good morning. Anything I wanted to say is I wanted to thank our staff and environmental management for all the Earth Day activities they had last week and for not just their staff, but other county staff who came out to HCC, it was a partnership with HCC for the event that they had out there last week. So I just want to thank them for putting that all together and for all county staff amongst a number of departments that came out and planted some trees and picked up trash and did a number of other things for Earth Day. So I do appreciate their efforts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joan. With that, we'll move into Citizens Participation. We have anyone this morning that would like to come forward? Good morning, ma'am. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Stephanie Phillips, AKA Schlepo. You have my address on record.
Thank you.
Mailing address. This is just an excerpt from a rough draft that I never publicly gave. I have followed the chain of command, being from a military family, requesting official meetings with the Federal Bureau of Investigation as far back as March of 2005 and more recently asked the Central Intelligence Community to join the discussion to discuss national security classification of my family, separating out my grandmother and father, who should be declassified by now, and my generation, who have been human trafficked and targeted prior to adulthood. Most recently, I requested help from the Office of Shelley Moore Capito. Maryland and Virginia donated land for the Democratic City of DC. The elevator in the Washington Monument does not reflect general history timeline. Virginia donated land to West Virginia to become the divorce Mecca for Langley and prominent families of Maryland, Virginia, and DC. Buncombe and Yancey County in North Carolina donated land to form Madison County to explain fake ancestry of my family and conveniently destroy records in a courthouse which should have been built on higher ground. I have requested protection under the federal whistleblower statute a while ago. A lot of evidence has been documented verbally and in writing regarding irregularities that defy statistic and probability. Dam, lake, and land development to support and extend over development of Buncombe County, North Carolina is four decades behind schedule. The Mid-Atlantic is in a similar situation. My relatives and neighbors down south are doing the best they can to prepare for international world peace and preservation. Last spring, the challenges off the coast of the Mid-Atlantic were mitigated. Now is the time to help secure the Mid-Atlantic region from central Pennsylvania, south to Norfolk, Virginia. Many are prepared to help, including myself and family. Relocation space preparation for many, many, not just myself, is Step 1, needs to be ready by June 1st. We need to move Citizens Emergency Preparedness Day up to the weekend after Labor Day, that Saturday, and encourage all of our senior citizens and grandparents to participate as we expand on what we've learned during COVID and become a model for more extraordinary national emergency preparedness. Additional plans for your consideration can be discussed at a later date. Thank you for your consideration, your service to the community and our nation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Anyone else in Citizens Participation? Hearing none, we'll move right along. Next is a public hearing, modification of water and sewer rates FY 2024. And I do have a statement to read. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The Commissioners may then discuss the issue and provide direction to staff concerning budget adjustments as a result of the proposed service rates. The budget will be the subject of a public hearing on a later date. At this time, I'll have Michelle Gordon and Mark Bradshaw. Would you please introduce the matter?
Michelle Gordon, Chief Financial Officer.
Mark Bradshaw, Director of Environmental Management.
This is a public hearing for the modification of water rates for fiscal year 24. There are no proposed changes to the sewer rates for fiscal year 24. Water revenue requirements show that an increase in revenue is necessary to facilitate the Department of Water Quality's long-range financial plans. The cost of providing this service was primarily impacted by inflationary increases for expenditures. The presented rate schedule for fiscal year 24 is based on those requirements. The last rate increase for water rates was in fiscal year 22, and prior to that, the last increase prior to that was in fiscal year 19. Rate changes project a revenue impact of $26,400 for water services. The rate changes are expected to increase by 4.7%. The base rate for 6,000 gallons of service for residential full service is expected to increase from $107.15 per quarter to $108.35. Commercial 1 Full Service, $108.43, and that one is actually staying the same, $108.43. Commercial 2 Full Service, $133.93 to $154.65. Volunteer Service, the base rate will increase from $107.15 to $108.35. The volume rates per 1,000 gallons of water for residential full service will increase per quarter from $12.40 to $13.61. Commercial 1 Full Service will stay the same at $12.47 per quarter. Commercial 2 Full Service will increase from $9.63 to $11.24 per 1,000 gallons per quarter. Volunteer Service will increase from $12.40 to $13.61. Non-metered accounts will increase from $181.55 per quarter to $190.01 per quarter. The average expected increase for residential customers is about $1.46 per quarter. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you to open it up for public comment. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you to open it up for public comment.
Anyone wishing to make comments this morning? Hearing is now open for public comment. Hearing none. I'll look at my fellow Commissioners. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments, remarks? At this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is public hearing, modification of charges, rentals, and fees at the Hagerstown Regional Airport for FY 2024. Likewise, the purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The Commissioners may then discuss the issue and provide direction to staff concerning budget adjustments as a result of the proposed rates. The budget will be subject of a public hearing on a later date. At this time, I'd like Neil Duran and Michelle Gordon to bring the matter before us.
Michelle Gordon, Chief Financial Officer.
Neil Doran, Airport Director.
This is a public hearing regarding the modification of charges, rentals, and fees at the Hagerstown Regional Airport for fiscal year 2024. An approximately 3% increase in T-hanger rental charges is necessary to maintain compliance with fair market value grant assurance as required by the FAA. The fee increase is also necessary to maintain the aging facilities and continued operations. Increases in parking and landing fees are necessary to maintain fee and rental structure for the facilities and services at the Hagerstown Regional Airport, which still make the airport as self-sustaining as possible, taking into account such factors as the volume of traffic and economy of collections. Parking and landing fees were last increased in fiscal year 2023. The fiscal impact of the proposed rate changes include approximately $14,470 in new revenue from T-hanger rental charges, $2,500 from aircraft parking fees, and $20,770 from landing fees for transients. There are a number of charges here, so I'll read each one of them. For hangars, small single-engine hangars for T-hanger Buildings 8, 10, 11, and 12, the current rate is $283 per month. It will increase to $291 per month. T-hanger Buildings 6 and 7 will increase from $268 to $276 per month. Old T-hangers with paved floor will increase from $186 to $192 per month. Old T-hangers with stone floor will increase from $169 to $174 per month. T-hanger 2J will increase from $159 to $164 per month. Large multi-engine hangars, T-hanger Building 4-B, $1,062 to $1,094 per month. T-hanger Buildings 8 and 9, $354 to $365 per month. T-hanger Building 7, $338 to $348 per month. T-hanger 2A, $531 to $547 per month. T-hanger 4D, $580 to $597 per month. T-hanger 4G, $625 to $644 per month. T-hanger 7I, $457 to $471 per month. Hangar 13A, B, and C, $580 a month to $597 per month. The hangar offices, T-hanger Buildings 1 through 8, $133 per month to $137 per month. T-hanger Buildings 9, 10, 11, and 12, $176 to $181 per month. T-hanger Office 1A, $516 to $531 per month. T-hanger Office 7H, $542 to $558 per month. T-hanger Office 4-C, $184 to $190 per month. Utilities for T-hanger Office 4C, $32 a month to $33 per month. T-hanger Office 10A, $186 to $192 per month. T-hanger Office 11A, $195 to $201 per month. T-hanger Office 12N, $144 to $148 a month. Combination Office and Hangar, Hangar 4A and 4H, increasing from $712 to $733 per month. Office 7A and Hangar 7B, $597 to $615 per month. Office 8-8 and Hangar 8-7, $663 to $683 per month. Office 9N and Hangar 9M, $652 to $672 per month. Commercial Office 8L, $199 to $205 per month. Corporate hangars are separate lease agreements and negotiated, not subject to the fee schedule. Then on the second page, the monthly aircraft tie-down and ramp parking fees. Monthly rate for grass would increase from $66 to $69. Single-engine piston, $95 to $99. Twin-engine piston, $141 to $145. The turboprop, small jet, medium jet, and large aircraft will no longer have a flat sket fee. They will be negotiated by the Airport Director. Transient ramp fees and overnight aircraft parking fees for a single-engine piston will increase from $14 to $15. Twin-engine piston, $19 to $20. Turboprop, $24 to $100. Many of the rate changes in this section are based on market rates. The small helicopter, less than 20,000 pounds, was not formally charged to rate. It will now be charged 24. I'm sorry, it wasn't a separate category. It's now a separate category, and it will be charged $24. Large helicopter as a separate category will be $100. The small jet Class 1 and 2 will be increasing from $30 to $200. Mid-sized jet Class 3 or 4 is increasing from $35 to $300. A large jet Class 5 will increase from $111 to $400. And then a large aircraft Class 6 did not previously have a category. It will now have a category of $450. Landing fees are also based on market rates. Class 1 will increase from $13.50 to $15. Class 2, $19 to $30. Class 3 will increase from $26 to $50. Class 4 will increase from $37 to 100. Class 5 will increase from $61 to $150. And Class 6 did not previously have a category. It will now be $200. I do have Neil Doran here, if he'd like to add anything to that. Otherwise, we'll turn it back over to the Commission to open up for public comment.
I see you got to do public comment before we answer questions.
Right, exactly, yes. Neil, you have any comments or thoughts?
Just a section on the, excuse me, the transient ramp fees. That refers to like our firehouse apron adjacent to our terminal. Excuse me, those rare occasions where we can park aircraft there. It does not refer to the ramp fee folks pay at the FBO. That's separate. And we have discussed these rates and fees, both with the FBO and our airline as well.
With that, I'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak here this morning? Hearing none, I'll bring it back and open it to the Commissioners before I close it.
I had one question for you and one question for Neil. Is this, I know that, does most of the military use the FBO, which it wouldn't get charged for? They use us, which we charge them for. Do we park any military or charge landing fees for military?
We don't. Locally-based aircraft, federal aircraft, state aircraft, and military aircraft.
Are exempt.
Are exempt, as are aircraft under 6,500 pounds maximum gross takeoff weight.
Yeah, because I know we have a lot of military in and out, and I just, I don't know if we should have charged them or not. That's why.
We're not, we're not in the habit of doing that.
Any other comments? Neil, I have a couple questions. I guess first and foremost, I know that, you know, having attended the Allegiant conferences in the past, and before I go with that, thank you. And I understand you were there all last week, and trust all went well with Allegiant and the interaction and that sort of thing. How, with that said, how does any of these increases affect Allegiant? Are they aware of them? Are they concerned or?
Yes, they are aware. They're not concerned. It was reported that our cost per employment for Allegiant was eighth lowest among their 125 cities that they serve. They're in agreement that our operating agreement can be reopened and updated, and they're aware of this adjustment on the landing fee to $200 and supportive of it.
Very good. I had another question I'd done forgotten.
Maybe it was about running Jeff through the x-ray machine.
I think they give up on that.
And the classifications in the landing fee, just based upon the classes, it places us about where we need to be with our peer airports, such as Salisbury, Maryland, as a commercial service airport similar to us.
We had a rate increase last year, right?
We did, but the highest level of the landing fee was always driven by what we charged Allegiant. But really, when we look at it, it's usually a rate per thousand pounds. And it was like, in the case of an Airbus 320, like 34 cents per thousand pounds. And really, we should be getting up over $2 for an airport of our size. BWI will be getting $6 or $8 per thousand pounds, for some perspective.
Just another question, I guess. I know that, probably not Lifeline, but there's two helicopters that are based in hangars over, near, or on the Ryder Jet Center. Do they have to pay when they go in and out?
They don't pay landing fees. No, they would be a based aircraft. As far as any handling fees, there are things that are paid separately to the FBO. I can't really comment on that, I'm not sure. But no, landing fees are not applicable to locally-based aircraft, including those helicopters. This is mostly for commercial aircraft that are passing through transients, revenue-producing flights.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to add that for a matter of process, that you do have the ability to adopt the rates today, or you can adopt them later in May. Typically, the Commission will adopt them later in May. We typically do that after the public hearing because it does give the public one more opportunity to speak about the rate increases that are being proposed for both, you know, airport and for water and sewer. They do need to be adopted prior to the adoption of the budget.
And he gives us, what, one more shot at it, one more week at it for the, yeah.
And we are returning from our discussions with Allegiant, and I hope to be able to get the paperwork with them done, so a potential change in rates could begin July 1st.
Thoughts, comments?
So, we don't approve them today? We have to approve them at our next meeting prior to our budget.
Prior to the adoption of the budget, we would need to approve it. So, the public hearing for the budget is on May the 9th. We would then have a meeting after that to adopt the budget, and they would need to be adopted prior to adopting the budget.
So, the budgets for these two, these two departments are based on the increase of these rates?
Correct.
So, you could vote to adopt the rates today, but obviously, the budget, the individual budgets for those departments are part of the overall budget that will be subject to the public hearing on May 9th. So, ultimately, as Michelle said, you'll have to adopt these rates prior to adopting the entire budget because the budget includes, because their budgets include these rate increases.
Pleasure of the Commissioners. You want to do it today, or you want to wait till first thing in the meeting on May 9th?
I have a question for Kurt. For full transparency, I have a hangar. Should I stay out of this? But since he raised the prices, maybe no one would care.
It's not affecting you any differently than would any other member of the general public.
Okay, so I could vote on it?
You need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. We were still making comments and questions, that sort of thing. So, any other comments or questions?
I think it's wise to wait for both of these agenda items. Until we have our evening public budget hearing, just allow one more opportunity for votes. And then I assume, looking at our agendas here, it looks like with our public budget hearing on May 9th in the evening, is it anticipated we vote May 16th for the budget? Is that the plan?
I think that is the plan.
So, we could vote on this May 16th?
Yeah, prior to adopting the overall.
Early in the meeting.
Right.
Everyone good with that? Okay. With that, I will, at this point, the public hearing is now concluded. Thanks for your comments, questions, and concerns, and this will be addressed on the 16th. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is County Commissioners of Washington County, Public Improvement Bonds of 2023 Authorizing Resolution. Lindsey Rader and Michelle Gordon, good morning, ladies.
Good morning, all.
Michelle Gordon, Chief Financial Officer.
Lindsey Rader, Funk and Bolton Bond Counsel to the County.
Yep, okay.
Before you this morning, we have an authorizing resolution that allows the county to issue up to $15,100,000 of its general obligation public improvement bonds of 2023. These bonds are authorized to finance certain infrastructure, public safety, educational, and environmental projects. As is the county's custom for general obligation bonds of this nature, you're going to sell them, if you approve the resolution, by public sale at competitive bid, which means we establish a date and time for the sale. We circulate, a couple weeks prior to the sale, a disclosure document known as the preliminary official statement, which includes demographic, financial, economic, and other information regarding the county, including a copy of its FY 2022 audited financial statements. On the date of sale, bidders bid by electronic bids only, and the bidders are investment banking firms to purchase all of the bonds at a price of 100% or more of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds. Now, the county wants to end up with $15,100,000 in hand to pay for these project costs, plus the amount necessary to cover what's known as the underwriter's discount, which is the amount payable to the winning bidder for the bonds. The county has decided to pay all other costs of issuance, including the county's financial advisor, bond counsel, bond registrar and paying agent, from cash on hand. So, we build into the notice of sale that gets circulated to potential bidders the flexibility to reduce the actual principal amount of bonds you're going to issue once we receive those bids, and the county's financial advisor will do the calculations to make sure you don't end up with more funds than you need for the purposes that you want to finance. The date of sale is currently scheduled for May 23rd, and we anticipate closing on the bond issue on June 6th. The resolution contains the substantially final form of the bond, the substantially final form of the summary notice of sale that we'll publish in the Herald Mail regarding the bond issue, approves the substantially final form of the preliminary official statement, which is part of your agenda package today, and authorizes county officials to finalize the bonds, the summary notice of sale, the preliminary official statement, and, once the bonds are priced, and we have the pricing information, the actual final official statement that will be distributed to investors. Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company is appointed as the bond registrar and paying agent. The resolution contains standard provisions regarding transfer and exchange of the bonds. The bonds will be subject to redemption at the county's option. The first redemption date available will be July 1, 2033. The bonds are scheduled to mature on July 1 of each year from 2024 through 2025. The bonds are scheduled to mature on July one of each year um, from two thousand and twenty-four through and including two thousand and forty-three. The county covenants to provide continuing disclosure on an annual and event basis as required by SEC Rule fifteen C two twelve, which imposes that obligation on the county because these bonds are being sold to the public through a, a method of public sale. Most importantly, the resolution pledges the faith and credit and taxing power of the county to payment of the bonds, but you can always use other available funds to pay the bonds in the first instance. And the, uh, the resolution includes covenants of the county not to take any actions or omit to take any actions that could adversely affect the tax exempt status of the bonds. And that's a general overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have information related to the projects that are included in this bond issue. We have six point three million dollars in infrastructure projects um, for bridge re, the, bridge rehabilitations, including the Kittysville Road Bridge, uh, which is, you know, is a historical structure. We have uh, the pavement maintenance rehab program as well as uh, extension of the Professional Boulevard and Halfway Boulevard for economic, economic development projects. Our public safety project includes one million dollars for the burn building at the Public Safety Training Center, and then um, environmental projects and water and sewer quality funds include primarily projects related to upgrading the aging equipment there, including um, an additional one million dollars for the capacity management project. As you know, we allocated about four million dollars in ARPA funds towards that project to help redirect, redirect flow from the Morgansville Collection area to another drainage area and provide capacity relief and economic growth. And then lastly, for education, we have four point six million dollars, including three point six million dollars for the Board of Ed for their capital maintenance program, uh, for roof replacements, boilers, electrical work, things like that. And then one million dollars for HCC for widening of the second entrance. So of the fifteen point one million um, that will be issued, twelve million is tax supported, three point one million is self-supported.
Lindsey, um, a question for you. In years past, you've helped us um, I suppose, refinance some bonds to um, get a lower interest rate, and that has saved us a considerable amount of money. While interest rates aren't necessarily at all-time highs, they are higher than they've been in recent years, do these bonds have a call feature that would allow us to do the same thing in the future if rates were to drop?
If, they do, and, and the first date that these bonds could be called is July one, two thousand and thirty-three, so it's essentially a ten-year call feature.
Okay.
And staff is meeting with the rating agencies tomorrow, uh, all three of them, to renew our um, to go over the county's economic conditions, our financial conditions, and renew our bond rating.
Our rating currently is double A?
Double A.
So, uh, Randy, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, so Michelle, could you educate me in the public? What is our, what are we carrying in total bond debt right now?
I believe we have about a one, about one hundred and forty-eight million, one hundred and fifty million dollars in total bond debt.
Okay, and what's the average interest rate that we're paying on that bond debt?
I'm sure that I have that with me. I think it's around three and a half percent.
Okay, and what are we paying to service that debt?
We pay annually about fourteen point seven, fourteen point eight million.
Okay.
From the general fund.
From the general fund. And so we are, and this is new debt. This isn't any rollover.
This is new debt.
So this would move us up to about a hundred and sixty-three million dollars in debt. From one forty-eight to.
Correct.
One sixty-three. Is there a limit on what we are allowed to carry in bond debt by state authority?
Not, well, the portion for environmental projects that are being issued pursuant to uh, Title Six of the County Code, which we refer to as the Water and Sewer Act, there is a limit on that, which is about twenty-five percent. And you are, my understanding is you're nowhere close to that. There is no state limit otherwise on the amount of debt you can incur for other purposes. But under your debt policy, which the county has adopted, um, the county tries to stay within certain parameters.
Maybe we would all like to be updated on, I'd like to know what our debt policy is.
Okay.
And see if we need to review that. Um, so my, my question is we're borrowing money going into further debt in order to pay for current needs that are in a category of, you know, capital expenditures, but we're going into debt, more debt, and I don't like that. So, as we look at our overall budget, I know that you've done a good job of estimating what our our costs, what our budget outlays are and what our income is, and you're probably pretty close to maybe being four or five percent within that range of, but you're on the, you're being safe. So we probably have, what, twelve million dollars that we're anticipating having in excess that we didn't expend this year as we roll into.
Or fiscal year twenty-three, yes.
Okay, so why wouldn't we be using that money to pay for this? So we avoid going into further debt? Or why wouldn't we do this? It's going to be a higher interest rate than what we're currently carrying probably, right? Why wouldn't we maybe alternatively take this new bond, but then when we roll into the very next year and we have that excess, pay down the higher debt that we have? Immediately.
Well, certainly we could reduce our, our bond, our debt, our debt, our debt amounts with the amount of surplus that we have. However, the rating agencies are looking at our surplus, and they want to know what we're going to do with that surplus. And they want to know if we're going to expend that surplus immediately, which is not wise, or if we're going to expend that surplus over a period of time to help off, offset the impacts of inflation. Um, so that's one thing that they're going to be looking at. They want to make sure that we're using it wisely and not just spending it all at one time.
No, I understand, you know, I, I'm against spending it right away. I'm spent, against spending it for new things. I want a balanced budget. We're not the federal government that can, you know, print money, okay, cause inflation and stress across the economy, especially impacting, you know, the lower and less advantaged people, more so than any others. We have a lot of stress on our government finances right here in the county because of inflation. So there is no surplus. There is no overage. It's because we've got all this debt, and we're borrowing money in order to just pay for some things that we've deemed needed in the capital budget, right?
That's correct.
So we could not do these new capital budget things. It's an option, correct? The fifteen million dollars and, you know, just not spend it? And try to maintain a balanced current income, outgo process where we.
Right, we would need, yes, I see what, I see where you're going. In, in order to do that, we would need to increase um, tax rates for either income tax or real estate tax to help offset the fact that, or that potential revenue that we would get from issuing debt.
Or we just don't spend the money.
Or we don't spend the money.
These projects that you have, whether it's a school project, whether it's the water project, whether it's a culvert or a bridge, until our current operational funds balance out. And so we live within our means. Every family has to tighten their belt in order to live within their means.
The problem with living within your means is that you're not building for the future. You're not improving your infrastructure so that you can bring in that economic development, so that you can bring in new business, and you can bring in new residential growth in the area, or even improve upon or maintain the, the, the roads and the infrastructure that you currently have for existing residents and existing property owners.
Absolutely, that's my point. That's what I've been, I've been making that claim for weeks now. But we also have to spend money just to, to keep up with commission on aging, with um, EMS, with a cost of living increase for our workers, too many of whom are still underpaid and, you know, eligible for food stamps with their families.
And, and the longer you defer these projects, the more the cost for the project will actually increase because inflation, um, as you know, the last couple of years has been incredibly high.
So in order to avoid, another way of looking at this, and just bear with me a second, we are borrowing money in order, because we have avoided, or we've cut taxes in the past, and we're avoiding raising taxes to a reasonable limit to pay for what we're spending on a month-to-month, year-to-year basis in just regular cost. Okay? That's what you're telling us. We're borrowing money, we're using a credit card like a family, going into more debt, fifteen million more dollars in debt because we don't have the income to support it.
Correct.
If I was an individual, my spouse might have a job, or she might take a second job, or I would take a second job, and where I wouldn't spend the money, and I would maybe stop buying cookies or cereal. So I, that's, you know, we're, we're in a tough place here, and we're borrowing money in order to just maintain day-to-day.
I don't disagree with the thing you're saying. I mean, I, I, I need more clarification, though. We get audited every year. We have a double, if we, that far in debt is, as we, we're listening to, or borrowing more money and creating more debt, how do we continue getting a double A-plus bond rating? Tell me, tell me, explain that to me.
Our, our debt ratios are, are really good. When you look at our fund balance and our cash reserves, we have very sound fiscal policies. Our cash reserves right now are twenty-two to twenty-three percent, where our target is only seventeen percent. Uh, same for our fund balance. It's, it's around twenty, twenty-two percent. And our target for our fund balance, as a percent of our cash reserves, is also around um, seventeen percent. So we have very good fiscal policies, very good fiscal management policies. Um, and what we've done in the past to offset reductions in income or uncertainty in the economy is defer these projects. Um, and unfortunately, you, you can only defer these projects for so long before it gets to a point where you need to do them, or else you're going to have huge potholes, or you're going to have schools without air conditioning, or schools that have major leaks in their roofs. So you can only defer the projects for so long before you, you need to either increase your revenue or find an alternate revenue source, which would be a bond issue.
So if you kept growing, what's our percentage every year of growing with this debt? I don't know what it would be, but.
I, I'd have to pull that information for you. I don't think it's growing considerably every year because we do have debt dropping off as, as new debt is coming on.
At what point does it hurt our credit rating?
It would hurt our crediting rating when it got to a point where our revenues as a percent of our fund balance, or revenues as a percent of our cash reserves, were below that seventeen percent, and right now they are not.
Okay, on, on a credit rating, okay. Um, as an individual, if you have a credit score of, say, seven thirty, it's pretty good. You know, individual credit rating. Um, and you have debt of, maybe you carry a credit card and you have a car payment and a house mortgage, but, but then you go ahead and you get to thirty, forty thousand dollars in credit rating, and you're only able to make your minimum payments, you could have a good credit score, but you're not in a good financial situation. So, um, I'd be careful about focusing on, on credit rating, although it's a, it's one measure. But if we had, if we didn't have a hundred and, we're looking at a hundred and sixty-three million dollars in bond debt, if we had sixty million dollars in bond debt, we would have a lot more flexibility to address maybe some of the, the major items that we have with schools, construction, or a new courthouse, or the new jail that's going to be required. So you literally limit your, your options when you've increased your debt. If we, if our service on the debt was seven million dollars a year, we'd have ten million dollars more to spend. If a household is paying a substantial amount to credit card debt, they have less ability to buy groceries or go out to the movies. And that's sort of, that's the analogy I put us in. You might have a good credit rating, but you, you're, you're really limited unless you increase income. But how much could we increase income if we went to three point two percent on the income tax rate?
It would increase our income about eight million dollars annually, um, just for income tax revenue, and then, of course, the disparity grant.
Which would be about four or five million?
Correct.
So about thirteen million dollars a year, which would take care of this whole thing, just about.
Right.
Uh, Michelle or Lindsey, e, either one who might be able to answer this, and I don't think you can get it for us today. First of all, what kind of timeline are we on in terms of approving this? So you have answers for our budget to be approved. What kind of a timeline?
This was already, this is part of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. This is not for fiscal year twenty-four's budget.
So what kind of a timeline are we on in terms of needing to get this done? Is it just a matter of delaying projects and their start time? Or i, is there another deadline that I'm missing that we, the urgency to get this done? What kind of an urgency do we have?
Well, I, I, I think that some of these projects are already underway, and because they were included in this year's budget as being bond financed, if you've been paying some expenditures on these projects from cash in the interim, you, you are looking to get reimbursed once the bonds are issued for those expenditures that, so that ultimately, at the end of the fiscal year, you're really bond financing those projects that were approved for bond financing in this fiscal year's budget. So if the county were not to proceed with the bond issue, you'd have to take a look at the budget and where you might have to shift monies from other sources if the bonds are not issued this year.
So, do we have time to, so when we started our meeting in my commissioner comment time, I talked about liking to delve into different areas of accounting, and I'm always learning something new each budget cycle. Do we have an opportunity? Do we have the time to look at, or do you know, we have one hundred and forty-eight million in total debt? How does that compare to another county of our general size, of our general population, of our general wealth? Is there a way to measure that? To see, a hundred and forty-eight million is a lot of money compared to what? I, I'd like to know of a comparison, if you can get that for us, either one of you. Um, you know, I'm proud to be a fiscal conservative, and, and, you know, I think I've advocated for um, restraint in spending. Government has a purpose. Government doesn't have a purpose in some areas. Borrowing money isn't necessarily a bad thing. I think most people wouldn't have a home if they didn't have a mortgage. It's wise that that person spends within their limit, and their ability to pay that mortgage is reasonable for their income level. It, it's reasonable for what they can afford. Um, borrowing money isn't necessarily a bad thing. There is comparisons that I think that's good, that can be made between a credit rating and a credit score, but I guess maybe a big difference is, an individual has a lifespan where they would have to pay off their debt by the time that they retire, or, you know, hopefully, I guess that's the goal, where an entity like a county government or a government entity lives on in perpetuity. So you don't have that, that timeframe of a lifespan in order to pay that debt off and, and work your life to pay your mortgage off, so you can retire. It's different. So in that respect, it's different. So I, I guess what I'm asking for is could, could I get some comparisons to see? One hundred and forty-eight million, I've been told by past CFOs that by us staying within twelve million dollars of um, twelve million of tax-supported debt, is that correct? Twelve million dollars of borrowings for tax-supported, that that is a conservative number for us. Can we verify that? We have a new CFO. Um, could, could we, is there a way we can verify that?
I, I could get you history um, for the county's debt balances, as well as comparisons to other counties, as far as a comparison for debt affordability. Based on a worst-case scenario, the county could actually issue fourteen million dollars in tax-supported debt, and, and we would be able to afford that. Based on a normal economy, which is, you know, kind of what we're in right now, we would be able to issue about sixteen million dollars in debt. So we're still well below what we're.
Aren't we given a range from low to high, where we can still maintain our bond rating?
Correct.
Be able to afford it in our range also.
It's, it's for, it's, it's actually fourteen to eighteen million dollars would be our range, and we're at twelve million dollars. We're, we're still well below the range of, of what would be affordable based on all of the factors that are looked at for Washington County, but I can get you, definitely get you that history so that you have it for your information.
There's something you could also, I, I'd like to prepare your information. Do you have any access to information to?
I think that we would have to ask the county's financial advisor, that, that's more within their wheelhouse than my wheelhouse as, as bond counsel, to provide access or to, to obtain that type of info. obtain that type of information. This is where I say I don't do the numbers so much.
So Michelle, as a practical matter, you know, if you're going to develop a definition of affordability, it depends on what criteria and the values that you look at that. If I'm a young person and I want that Porsche, I can rationalize spending $750 a month and say it's affordable, and I've put it in my budget, but it impacts opportunity costs for other things. You know, I might not be able to go out at night, go to movies, you know, I maybe have to live in a, in a small one-bedroom apartment or something. So the opportunity cost, so the debt, it's not servicing that, it's not 12 million a year, it's 16 and a half million about.
Right.
Okay, and that's...
Well, it's actually about 14.6.
Okay, well, we're getting closer to 16 million, I guess, if we do this. That's $16 million we don't have to spend on things today, because we're paying off a credit card debt.
Correct.
And it's, you know, I understand the analogy that, you know, we live in perpetuity here, but it's...
Actually, I believe our annual debt payment has decreased over the last few years, but once I get that history, we'll be able to show you that it has decreased slightly. Not a lot, but it has decreased some.
But you understand my concerns.
I do.
And I'm also going through this in order to help educate the people that are watching here, okay, that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, the programs can't be funded if we don't have money, we're going to borrow money to fund some of these things. We had a lot of demands for our current operational budget, but also for capital investments for a lot of things that are going to go over the next few years. And you just mentioned that, you know, we could be bringing in $14 million more dollars in, just on the income tax side with the disparity grant impact.
Correct. And not to, I don't want to change the subject here, but of the 14.6 or 14.7 million in annual debt service that we have, about 4.6 million of that is for education projects for the Board of Ed.
Yeah, that's a good point, you know. That's another thing, that's on top of the $109 million that we currently have budgeted there. Is there another number that's also that we're paying for, for them, that would get that number up to about $10 million over the budget?
Yes, the amount that we have allocated in the capital outlay fund.
Right, okay.
Of about 5.5 million.
So it's not just the $109 million, it's almost 10 and a half million, so we're really getting closer to $120 million.
Correct, with our capital projects that we fund for them.
Okay, that's good for the public to understand. Thank you so much.
Interesting discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Motion to second to present the resolution as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
I support the resolution.
Okay.
I oppose.
Right.
Four, one.
Right.
Just to clarify, was that four, one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next item is presentation of the Board of Education's FY 2023 SB 291 Pass-Through Grant Application for School Construction Projects. Jeff Prue, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Prue, Chief Operating Officer, Washington County Public Schools. The matter before you this morning is to gain your approval on a grant application to the Interagency Commission on School Construction. In the 2022 General Assembly Session, pass-through grants were approved by the General Assembly under Senate Bill 291 to provide capital, additional capital funds to school systems. These do not require a county match, these are free dollars to each of the school systems allocated by the state. The school system has submitted an application for your approval to utilize these funds for security improvements. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. We provided the application to staff. Because it's security improvements, we weren't making it part of the public document, but I'm sure that, Michelle can share that with you.
I have to make, to see if the grant will be approved.
Oh, right, once, once we get that approved from the ISE, we'll share that with you.
Good.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, FY '24 Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, Preliminary Project Description Review and Ranking. Susan Buchanan, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Susan Buchanan, Director, Office of Grant Management, here this morning to present the FY '24 Appalachian Regional Commission Preliminary Project Descriptions for Review and Ranking. As part of the annual ARC funding program, Tri-County Council for Western Maryland, the local administrator of the federal, these federal funds, requested the county review and prioritize projects submitted for grant funding consideration. A review committee consisting of directors from the offices of Planning and Zoning, Business Development, Grant Management, and Engineering have reviewed the projects and signed a preliminary ranking. The Board of County Commissioners then has the final authority to review and rank the proposals at its sole discretion prior to our submission to Tri-County Council. ARC Preliminary Project Description Forms were distributed in January to municipalities, educational agencies, healthcare providers, and nonprofit agencies, inviting them to submit requests for funding through ARC. The ARC area development grants do require a 50/50 funding match. And FY '24 ARC's funding for Allegheny, Garrett, and Washington Counties is expected to be approximately $5.3 million, and that funding is typically evenly distributed between the three counties. Funding requests for Washington County's area development projects this year include 14 proposed projects requesting $6,117,000. You have a attachment where you can see the preliminary ranking of the projects that were submitted. It does list all 14 projects, and these projects were ranked by the committee based upon alignment with ARC goals, priorities, project readiness, matching fund, commitment, diversity of both the project type, and the location within the county, community impact, and eligibility. This year, I just wanted to call attention that there are more funds available than previous years, and this is due to additional funding that was provided to ARC through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And based upon this additional money, we anticipate that all eligible projects that should be able to move forward in this process this year to get the invitation to submit a full application. And looking at the spreadsheet that's attached, that would be the eligible projects would be definitely one through seven listed here on this spreadsheet, and potentially eight and nine. The remaining projects are not eligible, and they would not be able to be considered because of the eligibility issues.
You mean 10 through 14, is that what you're saying?
Yes, 10 through 14 would not be, have eligibility issues, and that's why they're ranked low.
Oh.
One question.
Sure.
Is the relocation of the visitor center for Hagerstown still in play, or was that delayed, or?
I have not heard otherwise. That was, this was submitted probably about a month and a half ago. I have not been given any additional information.
So Susan, the local private funds, what is that column?
That column would be anything from their own organization.
So town, number three, Town of Boonsboro is $120,000 are going to throw into that?
Yes.
Regardless of the source, could be local contributions as well as tax dollars?
That is their actual matching. Now, I'm not sure where they've got that matching.
You don't know the source?
Yes, right.
Okay.
The other is when they have other grants or funding that maybe they have applied for.
And then the ARC request is...
The bold column.
Right, okay, so, and that totaled down to number nine equals how much, then? We're, it says here, 6.1 million proposed projects over on the write-up page, but...
Is the 6 million for all three counties?
Total.
Oh, the 6 million is the total of the projects submitted.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the three-county total is only 5.3.
Right, yes.
But what do they have to spend in grant money?
But I'm not sure I understand the question.
What's the ARC request, or the federal grant dollars that we're looking at here?
Available for them to give out.
Yeah.
It would be roughly 1.76 per county, because there's 5.3 million for...
So why is the Water Street in Smithsburg not eligible?
Water Street Rehabilitation, based upon the criteria that ARC uses, those types of improvement are not covered through ARC. And I can tell you that I did present all of these projects to the ARC Program Manager and got his input, and that was his feedback that it would not be an eligible project.
But a waterline project, but a waterline project in Kittysville is?
Yes.
The Water Street Project Rehabilitation is really about, a good deal of that is about the water mains.
It is based upon the local access roads, the road, the rules for ARC, there was a separate source of funding that they use for access roads, and there was very specific criteria. There's no longer any money left in that particular pot of money. The area development is more for your infrastructure, and for road improvements, there's not a lot of, there's a lot of restrictions, and there's not a lot of flexibility there.
Thank you.
That's not for a water project, that's just the name of the street, right?
Yeah, no, it's water, it is a road project on Water Street.
Name of the street is Water Street.
Yes.
It's not a water project.
Correct.
Thank you.
But it's all, the issue there is they have to redo their water mains in that area, and so it needs to be synchronized, because you don't want to fix Water Street, the road, and all of that, and then tear it all up to repair the mains. So it has to be synchronized, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion, second, for approval as submitted. Ready, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is property insurance. Tracy McCannan, Risk Management Coordinator and Human Resources, Patrick Buck, CBIZ. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Tracy McCannan, Risk Management Coordinator.
Good morning, Patrick Buck, CBIZ.
And we're here to present a change in property insurance. Recommended motion, move to change the property insurance carrier from Local Government Insurance Trust, known as Legit, to Travelers Insurance Company, effective July 1, 2023, and to send a notice of nonparticipation to Legit. The premium that was paid to Legit for current year, or I'm sorry, current fiscal year '23 was $315,104. The premium has been increasing over the last several years, even though our claims on average have been zero to one claim a year. This is a consequence of participating in a member pool insurance group. Legit's renewal rate for July 1 will increase 15% for all Legit members that's in the pool. Travelers Insurance Company has quoted a premium of $286,700 for FY '24. This would be a savings of a premium of $76,363. The county would continue to have the same coverage that we currently have with Legit. The only difference is the deductible. The current deductible with Legit is $5,000 for each property and inland marine. The Travelers deductible is $10,000 for property, but a $1,000 deductible for inland marine. With the county's claim history being very, very low, there would still be expected cost savings, even with the increase in the deductible amount. In order to terminate participation in the pool, Legit requires a written notice at least 60 days prior to the next renewal date of July 1, 2023. Fiscal impact is a cost savings of $76,363. Concurrents is Michelle Gordon, CFO, and Kendall DeSonia, General HR Director. And the alternative would be to continue to renew with Legit at the higher rate.
So we'd have to have seven or eight claims before it evened out?
I'm sorry, seven, eight?
We'd have to have seven, eight claims before it evened out, and we've had about one or two a year.
Yes, that's correct.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion is second on the floor, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good day. Next item is Contract Award PUR 1608 Employee Benefits Programs Consulting Services. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning.
And Jason.
Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing.
Jason Miller, Benefits Coordinator, Human Resources.
Subject before you is the Contract Award PUR 1608 Employees Benefits Program Consulting Services. Recommendation is to award the contract for the employee benefits service consulting services to the responsible, responsive proposer, with the lowest proposal cost of $425,000 to CBIZ Insurance Services Incorporated, Cumberland, Maryland, for fiscal years '23 through 2028. The proposal was seeking industry professionals to assist and guide the county identifying and managing itself insured, fully insured health insurance plans like life insurance, disability, stop-loss insurance, flexible spending plans, et cetera. As you can see in the RFP, also will, the consultant will also help with the RFP for selecting the benefits for those. It's a one-year contract beginning July 1, 2023, with four one-year options for renewal. There are the committee members who served on the committee who voted on the proposals, and a number of representatives at the pre-conference, and a number of firms that submitted. Two of the firms were deemed responsible, and those price packets were opened, as you can see as attached in the matrix, and the recommendations in concurrence with the coordinating committee. Any questions?
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion is second on the floor to approve as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, INTG 23-0118, one outdoor road sweeper for solid waste.
Rick Curry again, Director of Purchasing.
Dave Mason, Deputy Director of Solid Waste.
74 years intergovernmental cooperative purchasing, purchase, INTG 23-0118, which is an outdoor road sweeper for the solid waste department. Recommendation to authorize the purchase of one outdoor sweeper, an amount of $29,072 from SB Manufacturing Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, and to utilizing another jurisdiction's contract, 111522 SBM, that was awarded by Sourcewell, to SB Manufacturing Incorporated, and to approve a budget transfer of $61,877 from account 21-21010 to account 31-21010. The broom that is being replaced meets the county's guideline for replacement, and also the department is trading in an obsolete compactor at a value of $60,000, which is credited towards the purchase price of the new broom. And we have concurrence from the Division Director, and we also have the price quote from SB Manufacturing in the packet. Any questions?
Just one question I have. It says the replaced road sweeper may be sold on gov deals at a later date. If it doesn't meet the county's usual guideline standards, why would we keep it?
Why would we keep it? Well, it's just a question of whether it's worth selling or not. It might just be scrapped at this point.
Okay.
Blew the engine, it's toast.
But the plan is to dispose of it somehow?
One way or another.
Okay.
Most likely gov deals.
Okay.
We'd just sell that scrap.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Did you mention the budget adjustment request?
Yes, I did. Motion?
Motion to approve, including the budget transfer.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next item is resend award items, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, I N T G dash twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero. Again, Rick Curry and Zane Rao.
Again, Rick Curry, Director of Purchasing.
Zane Rao, Deputy Director of Highways.
Subject here is resend award items, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase, I N T G dash twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero. Recommended motion to resend the awards for the outfit items without prejudice, which was consists of light bars and snowplows from Apple Ford Lincoln Mercury of Columbia, Maryland, that was authorized by resolution for a total sum of, the total sum of this cost would be thirty-one thousand, fifty-one dollars. On November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the board approved our resolution to purchase of four two thousand and twenty-two F three fifty crew cab pickups at a total cost of two hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-seven cents to Apple Ford Lincoln Mercury. And the vendor did realize that the upfitting was not part of the purchase. There was a difference of who was going to do the upfitting, the vehicle set for some period of time. The department got frustrated, so they decided to take possession of vehicles and to not forego having the dealer do the upfitting and to do the upfitting within, with county personnel. Any questions?
Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve.
It's moved to resend, right?
Yes. Okay. Motion is second to resend, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Utilities, Eastern Boulevard, Scott Hobbs, Director of Engineering. Good morning, Scott.
Morning, Scott Hobbs, Director of Engineering. I'm here to recommend the board approve the utility work for the Eastern Boulevard widening and intersection improvement Phase One project from the sole providers of the utility service, Verizon and Potomac Edison, in the amount of four hundred and nineteen, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars respectively. Work involves the relocation of the existing utilities along Eastern Boulevard at the intersection of Jefferson Boulevard and Security Road. Construction along Eastern Boulevard corridor will occur in several phases of work, as indicated in the capital improvement plan, and involves widening from two to four lanes from Jefferson Boulevard to Antietam Drive, traffic signal improvements, and extending Eastern Boulevard from Antietam Drive to Marsh Pike. Construction of Phase One is scheduled to begin later this year. This is a C I P budgeted project, R D I zero four two, with three million dollars in state contribution for the Jefferson Boulevard, Maryland sixty-four intersection improvements. The county has incorporated the work at Maryland sixty-four into the improvement plans at Eastern, and agreed to manage the coordinated project with the contribution provided by the state. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next item is State Surplus Property, Ringgold Pike. Good morning, Todd Moser.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is State Surplus Property for Ringgold Pike, as mentioned, arriving at consensus to decline acquisition of State Surplus Property. For the record, I think I forgot, Todd Moser, Real Property Administrator, Division of Engineering. The state of Maryland has declared a property located along the south side of Maryland Route four eighteen, Ringgold Pike, west of Reinhardt Road in Smithburg, consisting of one point three six eight acres. In accordance with Maryland Department of Transportation Policy and Procedures, the state has offered the county first right of refusal. The county would be required to pay market value determined by the state for the property. County staff has reviewed the property and determined the property would serve no immediate or future use to the county.
Questions, discussion?
What happens if we resend that? What, we don't take it? So, what's the state do then? Contact property owners along?
Oftentimes, how this originates is the adjoining property owners make the state aware that they're interested in purchasing the property.
Gotcha.
Both of these today, the owner's interested.
Is it, is that just a yellow area that you have? Is that?
That's the surplus property.
That is the surplus property.
Yes.
So, who's that farmer to buy it, I guess?
Yes.
So, how comes they don't give him first option? It has to come to us?
That's within their policy, yes, it first comes to us.
What's the market price?
They often do not provide that prior. I believe that one out of the two, they did provide it for here. I'm not sure what this one is. Thirteen thousand for this one they did provide.
West of Reinhardt Road. Can't really place exactly where that's at, but, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? You good? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Next item is State Surplus Property, Cleggitts Mill. Todd?
Okay, arriving at consensus to decline acquisition of State Surplus Property, the state of Maryland has declared a property located along the northwest side of Hoffenberger Road between U S forty and Garishop Road in Hagerstown, consisting of zero point three five eight acres. Again, in accordance with Maryland Department of Transportation Policy and Procedures, the state has offered the county first right of refusal. The county would be required to pay market value determined by the state for the property. In this case, the appraisal has not been completed yet, so they did not provide a market value. County staff has reviewed the property and determined the property would serve no immediate or future use to the county.
So, the county really examines those roads and never have to be widened there or anything like that? But of course, we'd have an easement, I guess, anyway.
We do look at that. We also look at if tree plantings would be a fit. I think from a staff perspective, we've taken the stance of if the adjoining property owner has made the first contact, you know, we kind of take the stance that the county's not interested, unless there would be a road project budgeted.
What about for parks or recreation or open space? I mean, if the price is low enough, or they're giving us first dibs, I mean, are we looking across the, you're looking at it from a roads perspective, right?
That's correct.
But what about for other purposes?
Since I've, since I've been here, we've never, we've never been, a surplus property hasn't came to us, you know, over approximately an acre in size. So, I think we do review that, and we reach out to Andrew at times.
But this, the one, the previous one is one point three acres, almost one point four.
I mean, in my opinion, I don't think that would be an ideal spot for a.
No, I'm just, you know, in principle, you know, process-wise.
In principle, if we have a property come up that staff would fill, that would meet that criteria, I think we would propose, you know, to accept the property to the board.
But how would parks and recreation know that it might be something they might want to look at?
We would reach out to the director.
Automatically?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus, we get a final look at to ask questions, so.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Five who.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Department of Business Development, name change to Department of Business and Economic Development, Jonathan Horowitz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jonathan Horowitz, Director, Department of Business Development. I'm here today in front of you to seek approval, to do a slight name change to the department that I oversee. This name change is to more appropriately describe the work our department performs in the industry in which we work. You can see the attachment that I provided the board. Every economic development agency in the state of Maryland has the word economic in their name. The term business development has sort of changed over the past five or ten years in its use. It's more currently describing business sales and pipeline building for private industry. So, just seeking to add the word economic to the name of this department to more appropriately describe it.
That doesn't create a whole lot of work to change that, does it?
No, it actually, really, the only cost of this change would be the name plate on our department's door, and we'll take that out of our budget.
And the website, I guess, yeah.
Business cards?
We'll use all existing collateral as is, all, there's no definition change to the name, so we'll just continue using up the existing collateral, and anything renewed, we'll have the new name on it.
Motion to approve.
Second, with comment. First of all, Jonathan, I think you're doing a great job in business development, but I'm curious, and I've had someone reach out to me, it's been a couple months now. We don't have a Economic Development Commission any longer, and I'm wondering if we're doing a new name. We have Jonathan as our somewhat new director, new Board of Commissioners, might there be interest in looking into that possibility again? For a while, we did a coalition, didn't do much. Not someone to tell us what to do, but someone to help advise us. Wondering, you know, the economy's not looking too good right now and to the future, and it might be helpful to have some, just some more, another opportunity to think things through and propose new ideas that we're not aware of.
And I would, I would concur. Internally, we've had discussions about that opportunity, and I believe our staff would be amicable to that direction. We do currently engage community partners and leaders in the community, but it's not a formalized process like it was previously, and so our department would be open to that discussion, absolutely.
Okay. So, not for this conversation, but some, hopefully, it's something that we can talk about as a board in a not judicious future.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call for the third, the first and the second, yeah. Yeah, we had a.
Aye, yeah, we had a first and a second.
Yeah, okay, you have all that. Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Next item we have is a proclamation for Preservation Month, May of two thousand and twenty-three. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Megan Jenkins, G I S Coordinator for Washington County Planning and Zoning, and I'm also the H D C staff person. Our chair may step in here in a few minutes, Greg Smith. I just wanted to thank you for doing the proclamation. All throughout the month of May, the H D C has prepared some information for the public, specifically relating to design guidelines, which we have posted on our website, and I'm happy to provide a copy to you guys, if you'd like a physical copy as well. The guidelines are documentation to help the public as they do projects on their historic homes, or if they just want to do some research. And I just wanted to point out that we still have information on cemeteries, the historic inventory, all sorts of information that may be of interest to the public, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the H D C if you have them, but I encourage you to interact with the posts that we have for Preservation Month. We have a survey as well that gets reposted each week, so we'd love to get some feedback from you and the public during the month.
Comments, questions? Hearing none? Well, Megan, I have a proclamation to present. Whoever here is customary, expose the flag.
On behalf of the Commissioners, I'd like to present this proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, May of two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainability, development, revitalization, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of heritage that have shaped us as a people. And whereas the sharing of knowledge between historic traits, persons, historians, museums, and citizens is essential for the appreciation and continued existence of historic resources. And whereas historic preservation is supported by the Washington County Historic District Commission, Washington County Historical Advisory Committee, and many other state and local preservation efforts. And now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, Washington County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-three, as Preservation Month in Washington County, and urge all citizens to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and preparing, participating in this special observance.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do it with all the Commissioners.
Good job. Lot of big words.
I stole it from another jurisdiction.
I'm always on the end, so I might get next to the primary. You just jump right in there, Derek.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Looking for a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated?
Motion to go into closed session. Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.